Studio light.
Yes.
Never been there.
I have three sixty mile an hour, but I've gone with six hundred miles.
Nope.
I gave up seven seventy seven and the other one.
Well.
So I'm gonna buy six hundred and then Costco will kick them back as long as they're not.
Thank you. We know that. Baker Tilly.
We get a lot of folks on our screen. Don't take them. Yeah. You're probably, but I know I give up four hundred and seventy seven.
Okay. I have one. Four, five. Okay, we have.
Are you ready, Sherri?
Are you guys ready?
Yes, we're ready, yes ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the committee of a whole for October seventh. If the clerk could please read the roll.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor.
President.
Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Washington. Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Jackson.
And we do have an excused absence for Councilmember Washington, and if we could all remember Councilmember Spitzley, who just lost her father on Wednesday, so if we could remember her at this time.
Since this is not an official business meeting for us, I'm going to ask our commission members to, and those at the table with BWL, to introduce themselves. I'm David Price, at-large commissioner and currently chair of the commission. Dick Pavlich, GM BWL.
Tony Mullin, at-large chair.
Larry Earl, vice president.
That's just your advisor, Commissioner Reese.
Sandy Zerco, Commissioner of the Fourth Board.
Beth Graham, Commissioner of the Second Board.
And Ross, at-large. And we have two excused absences, Tracy Thomas and, I just did mention Tracy Thomas, and Commissioner Frowe, who has a death in the family and will be unable to.
All right. This is an opportunity for public comment. If there is anyone in the audience at this time that would like to make a comment, if you could come to the podium, give us your name for the record, and you will have three minutes. Is there anyone in the audience? Seeing no one coming forward, then that closes out public comment. So the first item that we have on our agenda is Lansing Board of Water and Light Annual Financial Audit Report. As councilmembers know, yearly we are given this, and we have the board before us during the committee of a whole to go over the audit, and since we were here, we thought we would kill a bird.
It's not killing.
Well, it kills some trees, yes. So with that, who would you like to make a presentation on?
I think everybody's aware that the subject matter expert is Heather Shaw, our CFO, she will make the presentation and address any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers and Board of Commissioners. I'm happy to provide an overview of our fiscal nineteen external audit. In addition to our enterprise fund, the audit includes our three separate pension plans, our defined contribution plan, our defined benefit, and our OPEB or post-retirement plan. Our auditors, Baker, excuse me, Baker Tilly, presented to our finance committee on September tenth. They did a formal presentation, and we had a committee meeting that day as well. So the board approved the statements on September twenty-fourth. Our audit was performed in accordance with GAAP, generally accepted auditing standards. The objective was to provide reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from any material defects or weaknesses. I'm happy to report that our financial statements received an unmodified or clean opinion. This is the highest assurance that an external auditor can give. Again, this opinion also included our pension plan, excuse me, pension plan statements as well. All the required communications that were needed to provide to our Board of Commissioners, those were provided as well. Just a few examples are financial statements, auditors' report, management discussion and analysis, our notes to the financial statements, and then the required supplemental information. Our audit assessed our internal controls. Our controls must meet the goal and objectives of our operations, our reporting, and compliance. The key controls that were part of the audit, just to name a few, our disputes, our, excuse me, disbursements, payroll, billings, cash and investments, IT, and our actual financial reporting transactions. Just a few financial highlights. Our gross revenue was three hundred and fifty-six million. It was down ten million from our budget of three hundred and sixty-six million. That was primarily due to wholesale, so we had some extended operational outages, and that was the reason for that, that being off budget. However, our net income was twelve million dollars higher than our budget, and that was primarily due to operational efficiencies. And our VIBA adjustment was, our liability was significantly reduced, so we had a positive VIBA adjustment.
VIBA, do you want to explain?
Sorry, thank you, Sherri. Our post-retirement plan or OPEB, we call it our VIBA trust. Thank you. So that, so even though we had, revenues were off budget, we were able to still have a positive net income compared to budget. Our bond coverages were met. Again, we had no material weaknesses reported. We also had a GASB pronouncement that we decided to adopt early that was required to be adopted next fiscal year. It was GASB eighty-nine and had to do with capitalized interest, and so we went ahead and early adopted that. That concludes my overview, very high level. If you have any questions, I'll take those.
Are there questions from councilmembers? I have a couple for you. First of all, was there any repeat notations in your audit at all? Findings, any repeat findings that you had from year to year?
In our communications to the, no, there were not.
And how long have you had the audit company that you're currently using?
Yes, we are in year four, so this was our fourth year with Baker Tilly of a five-year contract.
And when we're looking at your financials, it's my understanding, and I think we had this discussion before, that the South Washington plant that you just built was over budget. What was that number?
Are you referring to our central substation?
Thirty-three million dollar actual cost on about a twenty-eight point five budgeted cost. Those are round numbers.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
On, sorry, yes.
I just wanted to probably, potentially, probably the best thing that's happened is if you were looking at zero payment lines, part of the meeting package, in the defined benefit plan, what actually looked at all the funding as the pension, of those, we have the pension, which has been above one hundred percent for the last number of years.
Right.
It was at a hundred and twelve percent right now, so it's overfunded. More importantly, probably, is the whole percentage, which had inching up, seventies, the last year was ninety-four percent. This year, because of the change in the third-party provider of some benefits, which had moved to the assumption of pushing it, it's up to a hundred and thirty-one, thirty-eight percent, and then the overfunded.
My, I guess my concern, the people that are contacting me are saying, when they contact the call center, they're saying that they're still getting a charge of sixty dollar fee. So I don't know if that's something that maybe is getting misconstrued, or if that's something that maybe we need to talk back to the people that.
To inspect their meters?
To inspect, to test their meters.
Uh, you know, after our meeting, uh, with, when you were there at the Saturday meeting, we, we put a communication out, um, I will be glad to check it again. I think, you know, maybe it's just timing here that we told anybody, and we've had a couple of people, Steve Serkan is over there, he's nodding his head, that reached out since then and asked for their water and electric meter to be tested, and we've done that, and he said, okay, uh, there was no charge, and so, um, the commi- uh, the, uh, call center representatives have got an email that effect, and it was talked about in their tailgate meeting, but I will confirm again, just to make sure.
Okay, great.
No, no problem.
And I guess, uh, trying to think what the other concern is, it's not coming to my head right now, but, uh, uh, I guess I'll go back to you.
Yes.
Possible, could you elucidate a little bit on some of the benefits that we're gonna get from the electric smart meters? Like, I'm really looking forward to running my dryer in the middle of the night, so someday down the road, I will get a lower, lower bill for that.
Yes, well, what we're, the end goal here is, when it's fully deplo- deployed here in a couple of years, is that I will go to the commissioners and request for a time of use rate, so that if you wanna run your, uh, your, your washing machine or dishwasher at night, to help us save costly power to the peak, that you'll get a different rate for that, and we'll be able to do that with smart meters. And, uh, also, a benefit is, is that right now, I think that you're aware, if there's a storm and a hundred people call in, the computer system looks at it and says, okay, this breaker opened. We close that breaker, we assume the hundred people came back. We don't know that, because we don't know what's going on. So if you're, uh, somebody that's got a tree ranch down in your service, we figure that neighborhood's cleared, and we move on. Right now, we did implement something about a year ago where we call everybody, but sometimes it can't get through to them, and sometimes people say, well, yeah, I know my lights are on, I'm standing under them, but I'd rather have that call than somebody that doesn't know their power, uh, came back on. And if you're out of town, you don't have to worry about it. And if you, uh, wanna monitor your electric usage, it's very valuable for that. You can see when you're using it. Now, David is a test of guinea pig here for the smart meter system, and he follows it. And water is the most important one for me, because you don't know how many calls I get where they were gone, the water ran, they come back to a bill of fifteen, eighteen hundred dollars, that's water and sewer. And that's not something I can do about it. As a general manager, you cannot waive, uh, commodity usage. I can put them on a payment plan, that smart meter is going to look at your water usage, and if it doesn't see zero usage sometime during a twenty-four hour period, it's gonna say, hey, you might have a problem, you wanna look at it, or you can monitor it, because you, you just can't get it back. So those are a few of the benefits, uh, that'll be in place here as we move forward. We're testing the system right now. I, I have one that I'm looking at, David has one, uh, and you'll find that, you know, not a lot of, some of our customers can't afford the internet and the smart meter piece, but they can still sign up for, um, the time of use rates when the board of commissioners prove those.
Uh, Councilmember Dunbar.
Um, will there be a phone app?
Yes, there is a phone app.
There already is one.
Yes, and, and I can, I can look on a given day, what my water usage is, what my, um, my wattage is, uh, I can compare that to what the temperature was outside, and, oh, see, oh, that's when I was running my air conditioner, that's why it's up like this. So, yeah, it's, it's amazing what, it's amazing what you can do with the app, so it's, uh, it's pretty cool.
Uh, yes, Councilmember Garissa.
Okay, so thank you. So I guess, two, two last things. So opt-out fee was a concern with some people. So is there, what's the opt-out fee, um, and how long can they opt-out for?
Sure, uh, the opt-out fee is, is a one-time fee, and it depends whether it's electric or water. I'm gonna have Steve give you those values, uh, and then I'll tell you how we arrived at those values.
Thank you, Dick. If you're an electric-only customer, we ask for a one-hundred-and-fifteen upfront fee. Water-only, a hundred-and-twenty-five dollars upfront to sign the contract. If you're a combined electric and water customer, the signup fee is one-hundred-ninety dollars. The monthly fee for electric only is ten dollars. For water only, the monthly fee is twenty dollars. And if you're co- if you're a combined electric and water customer, the monthly fee is twenty-five dollars.
Now, I can comment on how we, uh, got those fees. The, um, team came to me and did a cost of service. What is it costing? We look at this as an option for those folks that aren't interested in the program. What is it gonna cost to maintain a manual accounting system to do this, a meter reader, and they came up with a fee. They were a little bit higher than what Steve quoted, but I looked at what other utilities were charging, and I wanted it to be in a lower quartile. So, uh, I looked at, a lot of them were fifteen and twenty dollars for the electric fee. I says, let's pick a lower, a little bit lower rate, and go there. So, uh, that's how we, we looked at it. But we did do a cost of service based on the amount of people we see opting out, and a lot of people thought it was just, well, you're just in a meter reader, out there, why is it costing them? We have to maintain a manual system to, to do this data, because the new system is completely automated.
Okay, um, thank you. Uh, last question is, uh, so when we were at that neighborhood meeting, uh, that Saturday, there was a concern from a lady saying that, right now, you want a Board of Water and Light website to see how to read your usage on the analog meter, and you can't do that right now on smart meters. Are you still planning on rolling that out sometime this spring, or anytime sooner than that?
Oh, we are, we, we've had some talks about it. Uh, the smart meter, um, is, uh, it just has a digital readout, you know, if it says two, two-hundred-and-twenty-five kilowatts, and, um, you know, if you read it five hours later, it says two-hundred-and-thirty, you, you use five. Okay, did that math right. But anyway, uh, it's that simple, but we still wanna put that out there, because reading the old analog meters was pretty tough. Um, you had to have a, a class, you know, because of where the needle pointed on the dial. So we are, yes, we're gonna put something on that we haven't done yet. And to be honest with you, I was waiting to see what questions came off these agenda items, because we'll make one updated and, and put it all out together. So, you answered, yes.
Are there other questions? Uh, Councilmember Jackson? Yeah?
Thank you. On the smart meters, I guess my question is, is it, are the smart meters only connected to Board of Water and Light service servers, or is it connected to the grid at all?
The smart meter is connected to collectors. There's about fifty-five of them around town that are owned by the Board of Water and Light, and then the collector sends it to the cloud, which is protected and accessed only by the Board of Water and Light.
Okay. I guess, is there ability to put your smart meters to someday connect to more of a regional, or is it always intended to, as far as you know, just to be connected with Board of Water and Light?
Uh, as far as I know, just to the Board of Water and Light right now. There is a lot of, uh, technology in there that we're not utilizing yet, uh, as we move forward on this, I might look back.
Other questions on, on this? Adam, I thought you had a, no, you're good.
I, I haven't answered.
Been answered, okay. Anything else? Um, the, the one question that I've heard from people with the opt-out, um, fee, is there any way, somebody that's on, uh, a budget, to be able to pay that in payments instead of one time?
I'm thinking that we can discuss that. Uh, we're not looking to burden anybody once we get out of this, so I'll talk to the staff about that. It's not giving me heartburn seeing this table.
Yes, Vice President Spadeford.
So, um, what's the difference, when I'm looking at this chart for skipped, uh, skips and ops ops, those are the same people, so you're talking five-hundred-and-ninety-five people have signed up for the, well, upfront fee and the monthly fee already?
They haven't yet, because we're offering our customers, uh, what's called a skip. When we come to your neighborhood, if you haven't quite made your mind up, we'll let you skip for free right now. We're still putting technology in there, we just won't activate the smart meter module, and then we go back and talk to you. We kinda learned this off of that service replacement number of people, I don't want my pipe messed with. By the time I go through the whole service territory, if we went back, the majority of the people, I want my pipe on. So we're hoping, as they see the advantages of this, and talk to their neighbors, that, and, you know, this isn't a bad deal. Uh, so we're hoping to actually lower that number, uh, as we move forward through the project.
So somebody was at my house Thursday, very professional, showed up on time, you know, even gave the dog a treat, but, um, they replaced everything. Am I now on the smart grid now? I can use the app and everything, or is that not activated yet?
Steve, uh, I think.
I don't know, you know my specific house, obviously.
Yeah, but I, I think that, uh, the app's still in the trial period.
Yeah, we're, we're still in testing phase, and we haven't launched it to our entire service territory yet, but we hope too soon.
Information, I'll see if I can log into it.
All right, all right.
I assure you, you can't. And secondly, uh, we, we do look for test subjects if you're interested in.
Sign me up.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Comments? Yes, Councilmember Dunbar.
Well, I was, I think I clarified with Tony, but it gets clear for everybody. Every home is wanting to get the mechanics of the smart meter.
The digital meter.
Because I, I was thinking, if somebody buys the house, if the person who owned it doesn't want it, or the person who bought it, they're not gonna have to come back out and install something. All you're gonna do is put the switch and, and activate the mechanism that's already there.
There might be, uh, we might have to keep the module in, but it's nothing complicated. We changed meters, so I'm not quite sure, but, uh, it's, regardless of how we do it, it's a one-minute ordeal. It's not a big deal. It's nothing, um, I just, sometimes I was told that we, the active smart module, sometimes it's totally unplugged. I'm not sure exactly on which meter it is, but.
Mechanism.
The meter that's in there will accept the smart meter module, that's all I'll do.
Vice President Spadeford.
Um, is it possible to shut off and turn on and turn off service remotely now?
Oh, absolutely. That, when the MSU students come, and we get the forty thousand turn-ons, our four meter readers that work day and night, we'll do that from a keyboard. And also, unfortunately, we have, we do a hundred-and-twenty-five turn-offs a day for people that just can't meet their bills. Uh, restoration will adjust that as we see what the program costs, because there's a, there's an expensive turn-on fee, because if it's somebody else, now they're doing it from a keyboard. Once we get some experience, I would expect that to drop, and it's gonna be almost instantaneous for them, too.
I'm working with, like, Lansing Fire Department, too. If there's fires, then I think you shut the power off much more easily than, you know, the case.
Uh, we haven't gotten that far, but that is the case. We can turn the power off from, uh, our site now and back on, as we move forward with the program.
Anything else? Okay, um, we had the BWL rates and bill tutorial. Um, I don't know if people want any more information on the rates. We did have conversation on the bills, study on the rates. Apparently not. Uh, customer service training. I know, uh, this came up during, uh, Councilmember Washington's, and I know you were gonna go back and, and look at it, and so you could, uh, talk to us about, a little bit about that.
Sure, my pleasure. Uh, can I digress, uh, for thirty seconds?
Sure.
You can't turn a water meter on or off remotely, it's only electric.
You're still on.
Yeah, still, it's, uh, okay. Uh, the customer pain service, uh, we had some complaints of individuals saying that the customer service, uh, folks were, uh, less than professional and kinda rude, and so, uh, I explained to everybody in the meeting that all calls are recorded, and so the, the young, the individual that gave me the time and date she called in, I asked her to pull that tape, and, uh, I personally listened to it, so I'm not gonna do this whole thing. It was fifty-one minutes long, because typical calls, too. The call service person, I wanted to go pat on the back. The individual just was unhappy because of the payment plan, and they, they were professional, they were wore down at the end of the call, I assure you, but, uh, they never were any but professional, now.
Let me interrupt. This, this customer was in arrears on their bill, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
But, uh.
He's too nice to say that.
The bottom line is, is it, you know.
That doesn't matter, whether they're in the arrears or not.
On a, on a very rare occasion, I mean, very rare, one reaches me where a customer service manager's probably had a bad day, but they are few and far between, and we listen to it all the time. Uh, it's just always tough when somebody's, uh, struggling to pay their bills, and you, it's only so much we can do, and then they're violating, you know, they have policies and guidelines, and they're following them. So I, I followed up. There was two individuals that, uh, had indicated less than favorable, uh, contact, but they couldn't be, couldn't narrow down the, the dates, and, and these two, in a day or two, we, we take thousands of callers every, every day. But I said, if you remember, I would listen to it. But, yeah, I skipped around, Steve Serkan and his managers, the entire thing, and I assure you that the call service gentleman was nothing but professional. That's a very well-trained group. They have a full-time trainer that helps them do this, because it is a very tough job, because most people don't call the Board of Water and Light call center in a good mood, and, but they're trained to understand that.
Um, along.
Carol? Oh, yes. Just a quick, quick comment on that. I'm sure that the Board of Water and Light's objective is not what the circumstances was about the call, but how the call was being handled by that particular call center person. So, you know, it doesn't matter if they're just calling to say hello. Dick and the staff want that person to be acting in a professional manner at all times.
A typical call is a couple minutes, you said that was a.
Thank you.
Very, very long call.
Um, I, I think one of the other, um, complaints that we heard repeatedly was navigating the website and trying to find the information that different ones wanted to find. I know that was, you said you were gonna go back and take a look at that as well.
I, I did, and, um, it's a new website, and, um, to be honest with you, I never logged under, because I'm internal, so I, I went to outside, and went to lbw.com, and, uh, I'm not, and I have people that navigate that stuff for me all the time. I didn't have any problems, but we're always looking for suggestions. When we launched it, you know, we had suggestions from commissioners, if anything, if there's anything specific, it's easy for us to move it around. Uh, under the question mark, we type in, uh, you know, search, you search for smart meters. It, it takes you right there, so, uh, but we're always happy to come to your meetings, if somebody has these concerns, and talk to them, and if it's somewhere we have, uh, access to a TV or our depot, we'll bring it up on there and see. Because it, it, we put it on there for the customer's benefit, so if, if it's lacking somewhere, you know, we wanna hear about it. But we don't, I don't look at it as a negative, that's just a way to improve it. Like you said, this website was designed for well over a year, trying to take a lot of input in, but, under fifty-seven thousand meters, you know, we probably missed something somewhere, but we're glad to look at it and make adjustments to it, Carol.
So I think what the takeaway from this for council members are, is if we do hear those concerns about the website, to get more specifics about what they are, so that we can relate that, um, back over to the BWL, so they can take a look at it, and maybe it's the way the person's using it versus how the information is located. Anything else on that? Customer service, website? Okay, um, climate action discussion.
I think I'll have to defer to who asks for that, and then try to answer questions or help enter the discussion. I'm not sure what you're looking for there, but I'd be glad to tell you where the board's headed here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. I actually did ask for it, and I was so surprised when I.
I put it out for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, you know, I was.
I was thinking of you.
I was gonna come in and, you know, not really say much, um, then I saw it on the agenda, so I'm like, oh, man, perfect time to talk about stuff. So, I guess, um, first, I guess, it's like, where do we all stand as individuals, and as a board, and a body, and a region, and everything? Um, and it's all about, I think, also education. I only recently just began reading books, audio book, fifteen dollars for a month, you can learn about anything, and put it at one-point-five speed. So, On Fire, The Burning Case for a Green New Deal by Naomi Klein, The Green New Deal, Why the Fossil Fuel Civilization Will Collapse by 2028, and Bold Economic Plan to Save Life on Earth by Jeremy Rifkin, Uninhabitable Earth, Life After Warming by Davis Wallace. Well, and the first thing was the International Panel on Climate Change, one-point-five report. And one of the big takeaways, and I think Doug can help me out, and anybody else, is that we have twelve, now eleven, years to basically curb our actions as a people, to prevent the tipping point of increasing our global, um, temperature by one-point-five degrees. It's the one-point-five report. And it's not that in twelve years, the world will collapse, it's just that the, the things we see, like the hurricanes will intensify, the, uh, the droughts in different parts of the world will get worse, and people will be migrating to different places because of it. Some places will be too hot to live. It's just a lot of those things. So, what are we trying to do? And when it's the climate change, it's really also about carbon emissions, is what I'm learning from those. And I asked Doug, I was like, did you read these? He read one and a half of them, and heard of all of them. So, I'm, I know, I mean, we're trying to look at the right things here. But really, I'm just trying to get educated, and I, I encourage everybody to just keep doing that. And, um, basically, so we got the window, and you see a lot of, it's like, this is a global movement. If you guys watched the news recently, it's just like, a lot of things going on. The European Union is already, are so far in their, like, zero harmless emission plan, they're doing good, everybody's getting high fives. China is actually doing good, is from what I'm reading, as far as their investment and movement towards it. America, not so much, but what we're also learning is that, you know, I would say, and I don't, I'm not trying to get at anybody, but I would still say that the plant, the natural gas plant, the five-hundred megawatt, is gonna be in a state, and I would agree with a lot of the statements from younger people generally that's like, we're gonna judge, history's gonna look at everybody when we knew about it, and what did we do? And I understand the, the logic and rationale, but the good thing is, we're a public utility, and even if we made a mistake, there's still a lot of great opportunities to work towards, if we all are in accord that we believe the scientists, we believe the tipping point and all that stuff. Because it's gonna take, what I'm also learning is local and regional action to start it up, and then you gotta connect to other local, regional actions, and that's basically renewable as much as possible, and also there's things that we can do as far as just reducing, um, energy and ultimately carbon emissions, that we can still work on. Um, but I guess, and again, I, I don't mean to just get out here, I'm gonna be done, I probably will be doing questions after that, so if I can have just a couple more minutes, but I just saw it on the agenda, and it's the only time, because I'm also learning it's gonna require people to keep pushing other people, just to try to, you know, maybe hit this window. Correct me if I'm wrong, Doug, but it's looking like we're not gonna hit the window, so we're gonna be facing all the bad things when we get above one-point-five. That's, even like the E E mosquito thing, all that's gonna get worse around here, because it's gonna get warmer and all that, so all of the, the insects will even come further north. That's just one of those little things. Um, so I guess what I'm, what I would look for from the Board of Water and Light, just moving forward, that one, if we could agree today to just put this on as a standing item at the last thing, just because we're gonna be the body to, you know, try to do, to move forward. Um, and I guess I would formally ask that it be put on. Um, but also, you know, there's, we gotta adjust, too, the smart meters, I'm learning, is a great thing, and before, I didn't pay much attention to it, but I'm like, because we need to build into a smart infrastructure when we have the regions connecting, because even though we're not gonna be able to produce all of the renewable energy within our city limits, or maybe our region, but we will be able to produce some and store it in the new, uh, upgrades and batteries, and even like, cut it off and send it to certain places, and connect with all the other regions that's doing that, um, which is what I'm learning is gonna be way, instead of the big centralized plant. It's gonna be a mistake for the ads, carbon emissions, blah, blah, blah. I'm learning about stranded assets, which is natural gas plants that's being built now, and recently built, especially in like the European Union, it's already implemented. Stranded assets is where the price of, of even going renewable and even trying to do this is becoming increasingly more affordable and low, that the people who made the large, you know, recent investments in like a natural gas plant are paying for it, so to speak. So, that's just another, uh, thing to consider. So the smart infrastructure's needed, and I think the smart meters is like a mini version of it, so I'm glad to see, and now, I, now that I know, I'm definitely supporting smart meters a lot more, instead of just listening and learning like a lot of people are. Um, also, a consideration that the board, and we should all think about, is the, the workforce, because we have a lot of employees for the city, for the board, and we need to teach, transition, and recruit new people, because there's gonna be so many jobs required to build out this infrastructure, including more jobs than we probably have people. That's why we should get our young people involved. I know the board already adds some things, but basically, just to move us towards trying to make our one-point-five, or as close there to it, it just requires us to like, keep working, and basically, I think we're gonna be the leaders, too, of, and I know the board prides itself in being the leader, but I think that's still playing with the standards that aren't, you know, to the, to the crisis that it is. So we're leaders of a pack that we wanna get and connect with all the other regions that's moving forward. So, I guess, you know, I just, if anything, that we could all just continue to try to educate ourselves, um, and I really highly recommend audible.com prescription, because you can literally learn about anything in like, five days worth of driving, working back. So, I've been cranking out the books, and, um, I just hope that we all, you know, take an interest and try to move in that direction, too.
Are there, um, other comments?
Yeah, I can respond.
Yes, absolutely.
I, I appreciate, uh, where you're headed, and, uh, we're on the same page. Your help for us would be, right before I came to this meeting, I sat in a meeting with my folks, saying, we're gonna have to ban the wind. We can't get a wind farm permitted. Nobody can. So if you wanna, you know, go out there and probably work two years, uh, well, we're, we're way behind on our one up north, where I know I've, I've said, there's seventy million dollars in assets set in the ground, I gotta stand the turbines up, and it's a lawsuit, and half the staff thinks they're gonna stand up there, half doesn't, but we have to do something. You know, I committed these commissioners to have thirty percent clean air by twenty-twenty, and so, you know, we're scrambling now to get into solar. Solar's still tough, but, uh, it's still doable, but all these communities, it's not in my backyard, and I'm not gonna get into that, but, you know, where you can help is, you know, when you get a chance to put your voice out there. That's a hundred megawatts of wind, that, that's a huge percentage of our portfolio that we're not gonna see, and I don't think we will. We're, you know, we'll know by the end of the year if they can deliver, and I don't think they can, and then we have to start all over. And, uh, I assure you that the, the gas plant, which is two-hundred-and-fifty megawatts, not five-hundred, you know, is, uh, is a good deal for the customers, because it has to bridge that gap. I put an RFP out last year for ten percent of our load to be backed up for eight hours with batteries. There wasn't a company that could do it. Not a single one. That's only ten percent for eight hours. So renewables, they are great. I can tell you, I'm leading by example, I won't go into it, but, uh, you know, having solar, and even hydro, and the wind is, you're absolutely right, but we have to, until the battery technology comes, it'll come, I just don't know if I'll see it in my career, the next, and we have to plan for it, like you say. So we're headed there, it's just that right now, there, there is no way, you know, when, when the wind isn't blowing and the sun isn't shining, we have five-hundred megawatts to find somewhere, and if everybody goes to the grid, because that was an option, if we look at, we could not be able to plan to go to the grid, but everybody can't go to the grid. Because right now, Michigan has a deficit, if you talk to the others. So, we're, uh, you know, everybody else on that, right now, somebody's not gonna have the energy, but I'm committed to say that we will be a leader, and I believe we are. When we looked at the National Science for Climate Action Control, their carbon cuts, we're ten years ahead of where they said the, the report was last year. We're at an eighty percent reduction by twenty-twenty-five. Everybody else is looking at twenty-forty to twenty-fifty, and we won't miss that mark. So, I'm on your side, saying I concur with what you're saying.
I could just follow up. One of the, and I agree with you, too, and I know we've got a lot to do, um, but we also have to serve our customers in the interim until we get there. There is a large utility that's running a lot of commercials, telling that they will be out of the coal business by twenty-forty. Our commitment is to be out of the coal business by twenty-twenty-five. This year, we'll be saying goodbye to wink and blink and a nod, and then five more years down the road, we'll be, be closing the Erickson plant. So, it's not like we're, we're sitting still. Can we do more? Yeah, there's a lot more that needs to be done. A lot is going, and, and this is one of the things, this large utility is asking their customers, our customers, are gonna have to do something, too, because it's gonna take conservation, which is the, the cheapest form of renewables, is to not use it in the first place.
Okay. Vice President Spadeford.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. I really appreciate, um, Councilman Jackson's commitment to the issue, and I know a lot of the council is there as well, but the board, I think, has done great work in trying to reduce our carbon footprint, that we can both call power plants offline much faster than anticipated, and all those types of things. Battery's not the answer quite yet. I mean, you, we've talked about it around this table, we've talked around it in podcasts and audiobooks I've listened to myself. I mean, and if you ever watch the videos of what rare earth mineral mining does to the communities that those batteries are made in, it's, it's another, it's a different ecological catastrophe. So, the only real answer here is for us to actually reduce what we're doing, which is why I was happy that the council and the mayor put into our budget efforts to reduce our footprint here in the city of Lansing. And I know those efforts are ongoing. Samantha's here, she, I know I'm gonna put her on the spot, but we have people doing performance audits, taking a look at our energy footprint, to see how we can reduce that, because it doesn't matter where the electricity's coming. doesn't matter where the electricity is coming from. If we do less of it, it's less of an issue. So I'm happy to hear all of the energy efficiencies that you're trying to help us accomplish through different lighting in this, in the city. I just got a compliment today. The new LED lights on MLK look great. And you know, you know, they're using less electricity. And that's great. So we, I, I appreciate the efforts. I know there's more to do. Um, but until we have a different answer, I think, I think the board is heading in the right direction.
Are there any other comments at this time? Um, Sandy and then we'll do, uh, Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Carol. Um, I just, there's two things. Um, uh, Dick, there, at the last public meeting that we had, you talked about, uh, a way that the internally you were offering, um, some assistance to the strikers. And I thought the city council people may want to know that if they call, uh, if they get calls from strikers, that they can call and they will be worked with if, if at all possible.
Sure. Uh, what we're telling people that are calling, which, which we do routinely, is that we are working with, that we will work with them on a payment plan. So it abides anybody that's in distress right now. But we're making sure that, that they know that because there's, uh, there's always, there's a lot of people that struggle paying their bills. But right now, with, it's not just the folks that are out on the strike. There's, uh, um, people have been laid off from three one suppliers that aren't working. We're already starting to see it in other areas of the community. So we're, we're telling them that we have a, a payment plan. Get with us, working with us. Um, and, uh, you know, we, we don't want to shut, uh, the, the energy off to somebody that's out of work, that's got a job coming up. So we're going to do everything we can there.
Thank you, Dick. Um, and one other thing, uh, the labor community had a labor forum last week. And I just want to make a comment about the, uh, the four representatives that were there. The, it's obvious that the city council goes through a lot of things, and they're very knowledgeable about what's going on in this community. So, uh, we appreciate, uh, your input and your answers to the questions that were being asked that night.
Uh, Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. I, I thought I wasn't going to say anything back.
Yeah, you said you weren't.
I said I didn't think I would. But, um, so I guess my thing would be like when we, we talk about the goals, it's, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's based on that hundred watt plant power renewable plant that's may likely not come online.
It is. But I will find, uh, other alternatives. I will not miss my commitment to the commissioners. So you're, you're right. That hundred megawatts was a large chunk of what I was using. And, um, by end of twenty twenty, my strategic planner is sitting there nodding her head. She will have renewable energy from somewhere delivered to our customers.
I guess just my last thing, since hopefully will, you know, be a standing item, is just to, just let's all think about some bold ideas. I think especially the Board of Water and Light and the commissioners has probably the best opportunity to like come with something that's going to be, that's going to have positive effect. I mean, I don't know if it's rentals, energy retrofits, or changing efficiency standards, or just something to think outside the box that, you know, takes a chunk out of our regional carbon footprint.
Okay, go ahead. And then Councilmember Dunbar.
Our Director of Strategic Planning, Brandy Edgar, is right here. And she is in the midst of our integrated resource planning process now, which will feed into our strategic plan. And trust me, all these things that you're saying here today and, and other environmentalists and other people in the community are, are being sifted through and pored over. And, and in early spring, late winter?
January.
January, we will be rolling out. But there'll be plenty of opportunity for people to participate in open meetings around the city and, and in the, in the townships in the coming months. So people can come in and express what their feelings are and what their ideas are. So look for that coming up soon.
Councilmember Dunbar. Want to pass that down?
I realized me yelling doesn't get picked up by the home viewer. Um, we had talked last week about farmland preservation. Uh, we were asked to sign on a letter giving comment about farmland preservation or, or green space preservation. I think it was DeWitt Township. And it was a, uh, we had discussed writing a letter to them requesting if they're going to preserve this space that, uh, that's the city of Lansing, would they consider using it if it's not going to be developed as a solar array? Have you, um, discussed with other communities, uh, any, any green space, large green spaces? Is there, is there adverse reaction like there is to windmills? Are they open to the solar? Um, I, without going into your own experiment, like what, what could we, if, if they were receptive to that, is that a place that you could put panels? And should we be looking at that with other green spaces? How, how able are you to, to put those panels in?
Sure. Answer is absolutely yes. We do this through third parties. And the reason we do that is because it's cheaper for the customer. We aren't eligible for the thirty percent tax credit. So we're working with other companies in those areas. We're one out in Owasso and Chiwase. So we're in all those communities looking for spots to put solar. The closer that we can put it in Lansing, obviously the cheaper, because then we don't have to pay to transmit it in, you know, use the transmission lines. But, uh, we also know there's advantage to having regional. So, uh, yes, uh, we've got at least three customer, companies that I know we're working on right now in outline communities, uh, different counties. Uh, and de- depending where, um, you can still get solar, uh, committed much easier than wind, is what I'll tell you.
Okay. Anyone else on the subject? All right. Um, we do have another. And if we could have the city attorney, um, we need to pass him the, the mic.
Thank you.
No. We need to pass it to Jim. Yeah. Um, at the end of the packet is a resolution, council members. Jim is going to explain that. And since we are here with the board, we thought instead of waiting till next Monday when we have committee of the whole, that we would do it at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, under the charter, the city attorney is responsible for provision of, uh, legal services and also to approve, uh, the request of any board for, uh, outside legal services, uh, including Board of Water and Light's covered by that provision. So what you have before you is a resolution where the city attorney is requesting the approval of counsel for, uh, the Board of Water and Light in what was a class action, not certified, now is a class action regarding the recruitment of, uh, surcharge costs from freight providers. And I think I'll turn it over to you, to Mark, your counsel.
That's exactly right. This is a firm that's specialized in this case. Has spent about twelve years litigating it. They're the experts there in DC. This is a, uh, DC case. It's at the District, US District Court in, um, the District of Columbia. And so these guys are the pros. Um, this is a highly specialized area. And it has the opportunity for the Board of Water and Light to recover a significant, um, sum for the repairs to be applied to our cost. So we're asking that the Hossfield firm be, um, authorized and listed as a firm that can, uh, provide services to the city of Lansing.
Are there any questions by council members on this? Yes, Councilmember Dunbar.
I was just wondering what the, what the surcharge was that, what could be paid?
Sir?
Well, it's, it's related to the, um, costs of transporting coal. And so the assertion would be that, um, um, that the freight carriers, um, violated the antitrust laws in setting up their cost structure that they charged the Board of Water and Light among others.
Are there other questions on this? Seeing none, Vice President Spadavore.
Madam President, I move the resolution appointing the Hossfield law firm as legal counsel to represent the Lansing Water Water and Light and fuel surcharge antitrust litigation.
We have a motion before us. Are there any, uh, questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Um, this will be on October fourteenth for passage at the council meeting. Um, our work, just like yours, and committee of the whole does have to be approved at our regular, uh, council meeting. So are there any other items that, um, maybe weren't on the agenda that someone wanted to discuss at this time before we adjourn? Seeing, yes? Yes, absolutely.
Uh, I just wanted to thank city council for hosting us again. Uh, it was a very productive meeting. And we'll look forward to hosting you in the depot at the first of the year.
Okay, thank you.
And your item, uh, Councilmember Jackson, will be a permanent addition to the agenda.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, then we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dick?
So Doug, do you read them or do you audio?
These are people from Colonial Village.